Mayor Brown, Peter, I'm present.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Pleschey. Welcome to our special council meeting of December 15th, 2021. This meeting is called for the specific purpose to consider the Government of Quebec's Bill 21. Under council's meeting rules, no other business can be considered at the special meeting. We will begin the meeting with the city clerk calling the role for attendance at today's meeting.
Members of council, I will call your name, please indicate your presence. Counselor Santos.
Present.
Counselor Visante.
Present.
Counselor Willens is absent. Counselor Pleschey. Counselor Bowman is absent. Counselor Maderos is absent. Counselor Williams, I don't believe, has joined. Oh, Counselor Williams.
I'm here.
Thank you.
I just got on. Sorry, too, Julie.
Counselor Fortini has indicated he will be absent. Counselor Singh is present in the chambers. Counselor Dillon, we see your microphone on, but we can't hear anything.
Yes, sorry, sorry, I said, President, I'm sorry about that.
And Mayor Brown is present. There are seven members present, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We are now at the item two, approval of the agenda. We have a motion moved by Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Williams, to approve the agenda. Instead of seeking a recorded vote for this item, I'll ask, is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count as affirmative. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Are there any declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act? Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Hearing none, the clerk will so note for the meeting minutes. We have received the following delegations registered for today's meeting. Mustafa Farukh, Chief Executive Officer of the National Council of Canadian Muslims; Sharenjeet Kaur, Senior Vice President, National World Seek Organisation of Canada; and Irene Galadza, the Saint Elias Ukrainian Catholic Church. Welcome to our meeting, and I just want to say to council, thank you for adapting your schedules. This is an issue that is very important to our residents, and I have put forward a motion with Counselor Singh and Dillon, but I think it would be appropriate for all members of council to second it. And for the context of the delegates, could we put that on the screen, the motion? And before we hear the delegates, I just want to say religious freedom is a Canadian value. It's enshrined in the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And we are facing the perilous, the perilous thought of, of the fact that religious freedom could be disallowed in a province of Quebec. And if this goes to the Supreme Court and religious freedom is diminished, that you can fire someone based on wearing a turban, or wearing a hijab, or wearing a cross, it will be an incredible diminishment of a foundational principle of our country. So this affects our municipal interests, this affects our city, where we're proud to be a mosaic, and it's why I believe we need to level the playing field and make sure that the Canadian Charter can be defended. It shouldn't be defended on the backs of racialized communities. And I welcome, I want to thank members of council for adjusting their schedules to make time for this discussion. We did pass a motion to this effect two years ago, but I thought, given the fact that the help is needed now, that we would have a motion being very clear, that just like we said two years ago, we're going to step up, we're going to rise to the occasion, and we're going to help to defend religious freedom. And so I wanted everyone to have the motion that we've been working on in front of them, and I invite the delegates to make their presentation, then we can have a discussion on this. The first delegation is from, oh, sorry, Counselor Santos has a question before we go to the three delegations.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and I am happy to support the motion, but you're referencing that all of members of council second the motion. I'm happy to second the motion, but unfortunately, not all members of council are here. There are four who are absent, and so I just wanted to make sure that that, if we're all seconding it, that the councillors who are seconding it, who are here today, are named separately. So not, not all members of council, but the councillors who are in attendance today should be the seconders of the motion versus saying all members of council, because not all members of council are here.
Very good point, Counselor Santos, thank you. Okay, so we have three delegations, and the first delegation is Mustafa Farukh from the National Council of Canadian Muslims. Mustafa, you have five minutes.
My name is Mustafa Farukh, and I am CEO of the National of Canadian Muslims. NCCM is an independent, nonpartisan, and nonprofit organization that protects Canadian human rights and civil liberties, challenges discrimination and Islamophobia, builds mutual understanding, and advocates for the public concerns of both Canadian Muslims and Canadians who care deeply about civil liberties. As the CEO of the National Council of Canadian Muslims, I want to begin by first saying a sincere thank you to Mayor Patrick Brown, and indeed to all of our respected city councillors today. It means a great deal that in these times, which, you know, things are looking something scary outside, it means a great deal that you were taking out the time to have this discussion, and to not only have the discussion, but to really talk about, you know, putting the proverbial money where your mouth is. You know, we hear a lot of folks and people talk about moving from words to action, and this is precisely what is being put forward here. Now, we are in favor of the motion being put forward today, that in the same way that the 2019 motion set off a spark that had a number of Canadian cities stand up to say, we condemn Bill 21. We believe that this is a spark that really goes from words to action in stepping up to stand against Bill 21. The law in Quebec, as it's proverbially known, Bill 21, that bans individuals wearing religious symbols from working in certain public sector positions. We appreciate the City of Brampton's commitment to stand up as it did in 2019, and as it's doing now, for justice, for Quebecers, and for Canadians. The NCCM, the CCLA, the Canadian Civil Liberties Association, along with many other organizations like the World Seek Organisation, have been fighting tirelessly to ensure that this discriminatory law does not stand. The commitment of the City of Brampton in this battle for human rights is essential for many reasons. Firstly, this commitment by the City of Brampton sets the example for other cities across the nation to be part of this battle and to stand on the right side of history. In addition, it is necessary to keep in mind that there are people in Brampton who, of course, wear religious clothing and wear religious symbols. By supporting the legal challenge and the operational battle against Bill 21, the City of Brampton validates the rights, the right of every Canadian, including those who wear and religious symbols and reside in Brampton, that their right to wear religious clothing and to be who they are, that right needs to be defended. In addition, many folks who live in Brampton have, live in Quebec, that are affected by Bill 21. Today, by standing bravely, the city council and the mayor of Brampton is assuring those residents that they will not be let down. For residents who are watching what is happening in Quebec, I talked to many folks here who live in Brampton, it is terrifying to walk outside and know that in a different part of the nation, it is illegal for you to wear a hijab, or a turban, or a kippah, and that you would not be allowed to be in certain roles. Perhaps most importantly, as a municipality, Brampton has an overriding interest in ensuring that the rights of its residents are protected. Bill 21 sets an incredibly dangerous precedent for its residents. In a scenario where Bill 21 was upheld, including at the Supreme Court of Canada, it could step the stage at some point in the hypothetical future that the notwithstanding clause could be used to attack the freedom of its residents. Now, the notwithstanding clause was used in this province quite recently, and so this is not an entirely unimaginable scenario. Therefore, with today's promise, if, you know, if we are lucky enough to see this pass, I think the residents of Brampton are assured that the municipal government is protecting their freedom of religion over the long term. Today, we want to thank Mayor Patrick Brown and all the city councillors for standing along racialized communities to protect our civil liberties. This is how we stand together, and I truly believe this is one of the most significant moments in recent history, where those who can stand to defend the rights of Quebecers that are fighting this are supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Mustafa. Our next delegation is from Sharenjeet Kaur, Senior Vice President, National World Seek
Sharenjeet, you can turn on your video and turn on your mic. Just be a moment, members of council. Sharenjeet, we do see your mic looks to be active, but we're not hearing you at the moment, and the testing did go well. Just pause for a moment and just make sure that she's connected. So Sharenjeet, we can, we, I see your chat. We cannot hear you at the moment, and we can't see you. So can you turn on your video, which you should be able to do? And can you try muting your mic and then unmuting again, and we'll just make sure if So Sharenjeet, we do see that your mic is now muted and now unmuted. Can you just test, please? So, Mr. Mayor and members of council, it seems we have some technical difficulties.
If I can make a suggestion, could we go to the third delegation, and then someone from IT staff can call Sharenjeet Kaur to sort out the technical issue?
We can try. I don't know if I have a number for Sharenjeet, and the third delegation is not present at the moment, so.
I have the number for Sharenjeet Kaur, if that helps.
And perhaps if committee, or excuse me, if council wishes to start to debate the item, I see the number here, and we'll reach out.
Great, okay, so we're going to contact her. We're going to start our discussion. Do any members of council like to speak to this? Hearing none, just while we're waiting for Sharenjeet to come on the call.
Counselor Dillon's on.
Oh, Counselor Dillon's on? Oh, sorry, Counselor Dillon.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and, you know, as a, as a councillor on this, a member of this council, as a, as a person who wears religious articles, I think, and a person who, you know, lives in a, in a community that's diverse religiously, I think it's important for us to make this statement, I think it's important for this council to take this step in really encouraging other municipalities to really follow suit, and we've had a history on this, especially this term of, of council, of standing with not just Bramptonians, but Canadians as a whole, when it comes to Bill 21, or issues related to this. And, you know, I couldn't imagine, you know, myself, or even my kids, having to go through, you know, living in Canada, not being able to wear your religious articles of faith. And so I want to commend the mayor, I want to commend our council as well, for, you know, so I want to commend the mayor for putting forth this motion, but I want to commend all the members of council who've seconded this motion as well. I think it, it speaks for itself, and I want to just also recognize NCCM, National Canadian, National Council of Canadian Muslims, and the World Seek Organisation for the continued efforts and the work that they do every single day for regular Canadians, and ensuring that we live in a just and equal society where everybody has the same freedoms, and everybody's able to practice their religion the way they choose. So, so thank you once again, and I will be supporting.
Santos, followed by Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Visante.
Thank you, and through you, thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question, and then I have a couple of comments in support of this, and why it's important for us as a municipality and City of Brampton to be taking a very deep, meaningful step forward on this particular issue. My first question is, does this also include Bill C21, just for clarification, does this include members of the Indigenous community and any significant articles that they may wear as part of their Indigenous beliefs?
So the Bill 21 prohibits any article of faith, and so if there was an Indigenous article of faith, it would also be prohibited?
I just wanted to, oh, so, yes, and thank you, Michelle, from our Equity Office for responding in terms of, yes, I wanted to just be very clear on that as well, because I find that to our Indigenous community, that would be, again, incredibly disrespectful, and quite frankly, a slap in the face when it comes to truth and reconciliation. On top of some of the other things clearly that the delegates have presented, as well as what Counselor Dillon had shared, that being said, you know, I thought about this and how this is meaningful for Brampton as one of the most ethnically diverse communities and cities in the country, why I would support this, and it is because of our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. When members of our community from different faiths see what is happening in Quebec, they have relatives, they have friends, they, they're all part of the same community, and to feel that simply because of your faith is wrong. And so the impact is, is not just in Quebec, the impact is also resonates here within our local community, and so I think this is a strong show of solidarity. One final story that I'll share, it's something that happened recently, where Counselor Visante and I met with a class, two classes from Ingleboro Public School in grade six and grade seven, and these students met with us online, and they wanted to know what the city was doing in a meaningful way to address diversity, equity, and inclusion, and specifically truth and reconciliation. And we had a long, one-hour discussion about the various symbolic things that we do, like flag raising, various cultural celebrations and events, et cetera. And, you know, when it came down to more substantive things, like changing names on our street, and other more substantial things, we really wanted to share something like this to the students. The majority of students in grade six and seven in that class were, I know for sure, practiced different types of religions and were parts of different faith groups. And I am so excited to share with them in follow-up to that meeting on Friday, because they were already inspired by the work that City of Brampton was doing to meaningfully address diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city, but also to take a lead as a city, as an example for other cities across the country. And I am excited for Counselor Visante and I to share with them that we passed this motion today, and what that means for them and their families when it comes to practicing their different faiths and religions. And so I do support this. This is something that the City of Brampton is addressing in terms of showing our substantial, meaningful contribution to diversity, equity, inclusion in the city, and setting an example for the rest of the country. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Santos. We do have Sharenjeet back on the call, so before we resume comments, I'd just like to give her a chance to give her delegation. Sharenjeet, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Sharenjeet?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, her mic is on. She did reconnect, and she did work with IT, and it looks like it's better, but we cannot hear her at the moment.
Okay, back to Jennifer Ellis to solve the problem. We'll go to our next speaker. Counselor, oh, so it says here, speaking, Sharenjeet Kaur. Sharenjeet, can you hear us? Maybe we give her the call-in number, that would be easier rather than the WebEx. Counselor Williams, you're up next.
Hi, thank you to your mayor. Can you all hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Counselor Williams.
Okay, great. I'm feeling, I'm hearing like a feedback. I don't know, maybe if I turn my volume down.
You should be fine now, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you know, I, thanks for putting the motion up. It's good to see it. I, you know, I think we are at a time where having conversations and real conversations around what's happening in Quebec is important because this is Canada. And I'm in full support of denouncing Bill 21. I think it is appalling that we have a province in Canada that is implementing a bill that is an obvious violation of the Human Rights Commission, you know. But it begs me to ask the question and hopefully somebody can provide an answer. What are our federal MPs in Brampton saying about this? What stance has been made on a federal level to abolish the notwithstanding clause and to make right for all Canadians who travel across this country?
So Counselor Williams, I believe that's a question that would be posed to federal MPs who are not here to respond. But what I would say is that one of the reasons that I believe it's incumbent for Canadian big cities to step up is because of the absence of federal leadership, both the opposition and the government. They have traded foundational principles for political and electoral convenience in Quebec and I don't believe that religious freedom is a value that can be traded for political purposes.
Well, you know, absolutely. And I think it's extremely disheartening to know that we have federal MPs that have the power to do something and we have to rely on other means to make, to fight for human rights. It's really disappointing. And I wonder though, you know, what is going to be said about us and what is going to be said about us making this bold step in the city of Brampton? And some people have been asking me questions around, you know, but this is not happening here. We have our own issues because we know the pushback against religious freedom still happens in Brampton and Mississauga and Kalden and the region of Peel, the GTA. But I do say to them, you know, we have made a lot of strides in the city of Brampton. I think as a council, we've made some strong statements around religious freedoms and the actions that we have taken in implementing an Equity Office. I'm wondering if Michelle is there? With regards to our Equity Office, do we have somebody who's specifically focused on some of the religious rights and freedoms, Islamophobia? Because I know when we endorsed the recommendations from the summit on Islamophobia, one of the recommendations was for municipalities to provide funding for local community-based anti-Islamophobia initiatives and such. So is Michelle there? Is somebody there to speak to what we've done in Brampton with regards to religious rights and freedoms? Okay, well, I don't hear anybody. But I do not want to belabor my points. I do think it's important that we take a look at how we are working to ensure that a motion like this or a bill like this has no legs to stand on here in the GTA in Ontario. I think we have to really be strong in saying that that type of behavior is not tolerated in our city. And so, but I do stand in solidarity with any supports to denounce Bill 21 and push back against it. I think it's, you have to think about the Canadians who travel across Canada and we don't want to have, be in a country where people have to change up their attire or face victimization or legal ramifications for wearing a cross or, you know, wearing your religious attire traveling through Canada. And that's why I think our federal government needs to step up and needs to make the right changes to make Canada a free country from east to west. I have no further comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Visante?
Thank you, Mayor. Other members have spoken clearly about this, so I will try not to repeat, other than just to say that it does happen once in a while in the history of countries and nations such as ours where political decisions do not really pass the test and it behooves us to, it is our responsibility when that takes place, when there is an unjust law that is passed through the political process. And that then requires a legal challenge and for learned judges to review those legal decisions and to determine whether or not they should be upheld or should be struck down. We depend on professionals in the legal profession and the justice system to give it a second and a third look if needed. And if this contribution by the city of Brampton advances that cause and can lead to a good outcome for any person who chooses to wear a religious symbol or to, who chooses to express themselves in any way that they believe that they have the right to do in every part of this country. It shouldn't be excluded in one province and allowed in the other. We are one country and this law, when you look at it and you, when you see what it does to an individual, whether they're of Muslim faith or Sikh faith or any other faith, Indigenous person, it is simply wrong. It's not what Canada is about. But we're gonna need the courts to look at this. And so that is why we're here today to give our help and our support to that process, that legal challenge. And I want to thank the mayor and other members of council who are here today for supporting this decision. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Visante. And our Counselor Singh is our next speaker.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Mayor Brown, and I just wanted to say my comments that I fully support this motion. I had the opportunity to jump on numerous radio stations today. I believe a press release was sent out by yourself and the response was ecstatic locally and I even jumped on a radio station in Montreal as well. And they were very thankful to council and yourself. You know, it's one thing to say we're opposed to something, it's one thing to actually contribute resources. It shows as a council, we are serious about religious freedoms and civil liberties and I think this is a very meaningful contribution of resources and I hope we see other municipalities join us shoulder to shoulder to fight this. Many Bramptonians through family and just, you know, we're all in the same country at the end of the day, are going to be affected by this, seeing, you know, members of their, of the same community potentially removed from, you know, particularly public sector roles. And I think if we don't address it now, this may become even a bigger issue. So I'm happy to join with organizations like NCCM, apologies, and World Sikh Organisation and the Canadian Civil Liberties Association to fight this and put some skin in the game to show that we're serious and that we want to see this bill significantly changed. So I'm happy to support and I would just also ask for a recorded vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Singh. I believe we have Sharonjeet on the phone now since the WebEx didn't work. Sharonjeet, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can, okay. You have five minutes for your delegation.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Brown, respected councillors and members of the executive leadership team. Thank you for the opportunity to delegate today on the matter of Bill 21. And I guess no virtual meeting is complete unless you have technical difficulties, so I bring you that as well. My name is Sharonjeet Corr and I am here in my capacity as Senior Vice President for the World Sikh Organisation of Canada. The WSO is a national organisation, 37 years old, with a mandate to promote and protect the interests of Sikhs in Canada and advocate for the protection of human rights for all. We've been to the Supreme Court of Canada on numerous occasions, fighting and protecting for the rights of Sikhs and other faiths to freely practise their religion. Our board reflects the diversity of the Canadian Sikh community, having strong representation across all regions. The WSO's executive is over two-thirds women and 90% of our board is under the age of 40. I raise this demographic breakdown because over the last few years, our organisation has been overwhelmed with a number of young people and individuals from all walks of life who are reaching out and wanting to become involved in our advocacy efforts because there's something happening in Canada and across the world that feels very unsettling. WSO has spent almost the last decade fighting the growing sentiment of intolerance towards faith-based communities in Quebec. This all came to a head with the passing of Bill 21. When our community first heard of this bill, our parents and our grandparents started to recall the trauma they faced when they first arrived in Canada. How many of our fathers and brothers were told to cut their hair and remove? How can we possibly turn the clock back now? And if anyone still believes that this is an exaggeration, our very own WSO board member from Quebec, Amrit Gaur, is a de-stard turban-wearing woman who recently trained as a teacher. Over the last few years, we watched her complete her studies while fighting against Bill 21, to inevitably have to leave her family, her friends in Montreal and to move to B.C. so that she could follow her passion to be an educator and still be true to her Sikh identity. Choosing between faith and employment are not choices we should have ever had to make, but our parents made them in the 1970s and 80s and we are being forced to make them again today on the cusp of 2022. I bring forward the lived experience of my community, but we are not, but we have not been alone in this fight. We are joined by our Muslim, Jewish, Christian, interfaith and non-faith brothers and sisters. We feel the pain and fear of what this bill is doing to our society. We are already seeing the rates of hate crimes were increasing in Quebec. We fear what this will mean for the rest of Canada. I also stand in front of you as a proud public servant. I have had the privilege to work for the provincial government, the region of Peel, and most recently I joined the William Osler Health System. And as a public servant, I can say with complete and utter confidence, my choice to practise faith and proudly wear my articles of faith have only helped my ability to connect and deliver services to our residents. And finally, I stand before you as the mother of two young children, children who are acutely aware of what is happening around them. I am a mom who has to explain the morning news story to her 13-year-old son as he eats breakfast and I tie his turban, as to why Jagmeet Singh was faced with yet another altercation with a racist individual who insisted Jagmeet Singh, quote-unquote, "cut his turban to become Canadian." And then I have to turn to my 10-year-old daughter and reassure her that there are more good people out there, that these are the outliers. But my personal fear is this: Bill 21 presents terrifying constructs that are not being challenged by our leaders, by our institutions, by our neighbours or by our friends. This normalises a sense of distrust for people who look different. This normalisation then leads to the validation of intolerance and from this, we will only see the proliferation of hate. We are seeing it already. The question is, when will we stand united as Canadians to stop it? As you have heard, several community organisations such as the WSO, NCCM, CCLA and other community groups are spearheading the legal challenge without the support of government. The case is currently before the Quebec Court of Appeal. The decision of the Quebec Superior Court found that the law violates the basic rights of religious minorities, but those violations are permissible because of the Charter's notwithstanding clause. The situation in Quebec is deeply troubling as it highlights that fundamental human rights and freedoms in Canada can be severely infringed by governments using the notwithstanding clause and the federal government and politicians will quietly stand by. This pattern could be repeated anywhere else in Canada if this law is not struck down. But the fight does not start and stop with organisations like ours, with public servants and moms personally affected like me. The fight against Bill 21 needs everyone in this chamber and all similar chambers across Canada to reflect on how they want to be remembered in history at this time. I commend the city of Brampton for being the first municipality in Canada to pass a motion against Bill 21. And today, I cannot be more proud as a Bramptonian as this council, once again, raises this issue and raises the bar by proposing meaningful action in this fight. You are truly leading by example. Some have questioned the relevance or impact of municipalities weighing into this fight. And to those people, I ask them to contemplate what these motions and actions truly represent. This is our opportunity as Canadians to firmly take a position against laws that create a space for intolerance, discrimination and racism. Your residents, who once again feel marginalised and betrayed, need to see their respective leaders stand shoulder to shoulder with us against the sentiments that are driving these laws and the broader impact on society. Bringing forward this action will also keep this conversation relevant because, again, this issue has not yet experienced the level of outrage and response we should have demanded as Canadians. And lastly, these motions will put on record that you, as our community leaders, as our council, will not tolerate intolerance. I will leave you with these words from Benjamin Franklin. "Justice will not be served until those who are unaffected are as outraged as those who are." Thank you.
Powerful words, Sharonjeet. Thank you for your delegation. Our next speaker is Counselor Plessin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I truly like to thank the delegation. And I recently had a discussion with my children to see how this affected them and what it means to them. And they have the privilege of being born in Canada from a Canadian and ultimately they so eloquently put to me that everybody should have the right to wear what they want to wear to express their religious freedoms. And I'm so proud of my children. Having aunts, uncles and cousins in Quebec that are so strongly against this, but more so the opportunity and everything that this brings to the people of Canada, I do support this motion. I would though, Mr. Mayor, and I do ask that, I don't fully understand what all present members of council means and would like the opportunity for, once this to be pushed forward, have an opportunity for, maybe the opportunity of all members of council to be added to this motion. I would like to ask in the therefore be resolved, item number two, where it reads, "City of Brampton provide one-time 2021 contribution of 100,000." I would like that to read, "Provide a one-time 2021 contribution of up to 100,000." A request that you, Mr. Mayor, the mover of the motion, support that amendment?
Yes, I guess the logic for that is if we get 19 cities to donate $100,000, then we achieve the funds needed. But if we get 40 cities, then the amount would be less. So that seems like a logical amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any other speakers. So before we go to the resolution, actually, Peter Fay wanted to speak to, do you want to speak to the point that Counselor Plesch made?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to advise that only members present at a meeting can be listed as a mover or a seconder. If a member's not present, they can't be identified as a mover or a seconder. They have to be present in the meeting to participate.
And thank you for that, Mr. Fay. And I just wanted that clarified. But I guess, you know, given that this meeting was called at the last minute and the importance of the topic at hand, you know, all members couldn't attend the meeting. So I would like the opportunity for those members at the next council meeting to, that couldn't attend, to be able to put their names on the motion. So that being said, I would like the motion to, you know, I hope that all members here today support the motion and, and, you know, kind of surveying the landscape and hearing from members of council and their support of the motion. I have no doubts that this will pass here today. But I would like the opportunity for the members that couldn't attend today because of scheduling conflict or, or whatnot, provide an opportunity to, to second the motion, be a part of this, you know, historic achievement against a province that is infringing on human rights.
Thank you, Counselor Plesch. And we'll look at a future council meeting where there may be an opportunity to add their name on the record. And I would note that all members of council did pass our original motion in June 26, 2019, expressing our opposition to this bill. And so I think it's a matter of, of record that we're all against Bill 21, but thank you for making that inquiry. I just wanted to make a few brief comments before we go to the vote, and that is, history will judge us as a country on how we respond to a blatant and egregious abuse of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And you cannot turn a blind eye to racism. And we've been a leader in Brampton on a number of issues where we stand up for what is right. And I believe this is an opportunity for us as a community to stand up for what is right. To help defend the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms that we are so proud of in this country, a contribution like this is 14 cents per resident. It's a small price to stand up for a foundational principle. And it is a municipal interest. Because if this goes to the Supreme Court and there's a precedent that says you can diminish religious freedom, what happens if you have a government of a different perspective elected in another province down the road? It creates the pathway to allow racism to exist legally. It allows the Constitution and the Charter to be abused and ignored illegally. We cannot have a precedent set in the Supreme Court that takes away from our core values as a country. You know, right now, we have a government in Ontario that opposes Bill 21, and good on them for that. But I think we've learned in politics, anything is possible. Look what happened in the United States over the last number of years. What happens if there was a premier elected in Ontario that wanted to have Trump-like policies of, of policy infringements on minority groups? It's not good enough just to say this is happening down the street from us, not in our, not, not, not in front of us. It could. And that's why in a country with a legal system that recognizes precedents, we cannot allow this to stand. We need to fight against this bullying and trampling of our foundational principles. I'd also add, I, I firmly believe that this is so egregious that one day we are going to have a prime minister stand in the House of Commons and apologize for this period, apologize for the schoolteachers, the police officers, the other government workers who lost their job due to their faith. We've seen apologies and compensation provided throughout history for egregious abuses. Do not be surprised if what's happened with Bill 21 is not an example of that in the future. I want to thank members of Brampton Council who have all spoken passionately about why they support religious freedom. I think it's a matter of fact that this council stands for religious freedom. After all, remember we named a park after the late Shabazz Body, who lost his life speaking in favor of religious freedom in Pakistan? There are many people who have come to Canada with the dream of living in a country that has democracy, protected rights, and religious freedom. And I have heard from our residents in Brampton, flabbergasted, horrified, that a foundational principle that they believe is at the cornerstone of our country's values could be trampled on. We can't take that value for granted. And just like we named that park after Shabazz Body as a symbol of our commitment for religious freedom, when it's abused in Canada, we say no. We rise, we're counted, and we will saw, we'll be on the right side of history in this discussion. We have the motion on the floor. There's a request for a recorded vote. Could the clerk take the vote?
All members in favor of the motion, as shown on the screen, please indicate. Counselor Santos?
Yes, can you hear me?
Thank you, yes. Counselor Visante?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Plesch? Thank you. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Singh?
Yes.
That's a yes. Counselor Singh is in person. Counselor Dillon?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Brown?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously, seven to zero with four absences.
Thank you. Now we have to receive the delegations. Now, a motion to receive the delegations moved by Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Santos. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the three delegations are received. This takes us to a public question period.
Yes.
Are there any public questions? We have a 15-minute limit for that?
There are none, Mr. Mayor.
Our next item of business is item 10.1, the Confirming Bylaw. I have a motion moved by Counselor Santos and seconded by Counselor Williams to approve the Confirming Bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. Anyone opposed to that motion? This is bylaw 294, 2021. Hearing no opposition, the motion carries. This takes us to item 21, adjournment. Council is next scheduled to meet Wednesday, January 26, 2022, 9:30 a.m. at our regular meeting. I have a motion moved by Counselor Visante and seconded by Counselor Dillon to adjourn today's meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in affirmative. Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, council, for adapting your schedules to deal with an important issue. Happy holidays, stay...